Uh. Silence yourself, ladies, and join me in the pledge. Mr. Schillingberger, will you read us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. We're one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leaving so soon, Kevin?
Yep.
Sorry.
All right, we'll see you.
I'm assuming you're Jesse?
Yep.
Come on up. Go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
Jesse Morris. I'm looking for the Lakeview BLM here as the fire mitigation and trespass specialist. Uh, I'm here today to talk about our community assistance program for the BLM. And basically, I'm looking for the county's interest in possibly applying for, um, uh, maybe an application for an agreement, basically, to the BLM for community assistance dollars. Uh, what form that takes is kind of up to you guys and, you know, open negotiation. Basically, our community assistance program, um, it tries to, um, give money out to our, the BLM's cooperators in fire and land management. With, and for projects that align with BLM land management, fire management objectives. So, uh, they like to do, uh, fuels, hazardous fuels mitigation, some equipment purchasing, PPE purchasing to support our cooperators. And I'm just looking to see if you guys would like to apply or have the capacity to apply. It takes, uh, you have to have a SAM's number, uh, all that stuff in place. I can't apply for you, but I can help through the process and try and guide that and come to some negotiation. It's not so much of a grant as an agreement. So we kind of figure out what the county's needs might be. And my thought was going through the county rather than the individual groups within the county. Uh, right now, I have a project with the Watershed Council up in Summer Lake that we're working on, uh, that's for hazardous fuels mitigation. But my thought was I'd like to go through the county and maybe the county could act as an umbrella for different agencies that work. Land Management within the county, the Fire Defense Board, and we could do this in one large project that has a little bit more flexibility as a movement in the future. The agreements are up to five years. And, you know, I, I threw out some numbers in the email. That's definitely open in negotiation. I think the notice, uh, notice of funding announcement was for up to three million. I roughly proposed two point two million over five years, I believe. So I guess what I'm here today is to see if you guys were interested in applying and working together and, uh, see if we can't get an application in. This year's funding announcement closes April twenty-sixth, I believe. So it's not a complicated application process, but we have to have a point of contact that I can work with somebody. Try to get that started.
So this is, uh, it seems to me like more money than, uh, in the past. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a lot of money flowing in and, um, right now, it seems within the BLM, not a lot of capacity plant on the planning side. This budget's been cut and cut and cut. And now there's a lot of money flowing in and probably for a short period of time. So it's kind of on the focus on the ground to see how quickly they can implement things. And the faster that I can implement, the better off Lake County will be in the, you know, in the grand scheme of things, uh, Oregon, Washington. There's a, there's a gaining competition for this lot of money, the federal money that's out there. And it's trying to get our fair share for Lake County.
Jesse, two questions. Is there a match for this? I didn't remember seeing that. And then this is only used on BLM land treatment?
This is for private land.
Just private land?
And ideally, it's somewhat adjacent to BLM lands, but it's more along the lines of cooperators, the fire departments and other land management agencies. The nature of our fires, you can make a case for just about any square foot of land within Lake County is, um, interrelated to be one of them, so.
Will projects, when you apply for it or whatnot, will projects or communities be prioritized higher if they are adjacent to BLM lands?
Uh, I don't believe so. So right now, I've kind of, I've been given the task of administering the project and Matt Haskins, our field specialist, he's the program officer for the project. So we talked with the state office to figure out, you know, and they basically say, what do you guys think? Does it, does it affect, uh, BLM land or is it all within the scope of what this project is? And it's kind of on, on us locally to deter, to determine, you know, how well this project's fit, so. The wild and urban interface projects obviously have a higher priority than any of our threat communities in the county. What followed in that, I don't see. Yeah, there's, I don't see, there's not a lot of restrictions on it. It's a pretty broad-based objective that this program has. There, there's a few hoops, hoops to jump through. The one where, which right now on the Summer Lake project is if we fund, um, the pro, uh, project directly, like the hazardous fuels mitigation project, certain level of NEPA does need to be done on that project. So, um, generally, our surveys.
On private?
On private. So the one drop after that is a lot of private landowners are hesitant to do that. Uh, but that is not going to a permanent record. It just, it, I, I can't explain the process because exactly, I'm not familiar with it, but it doesn't affect them over a long period of time, so. And that can be better explained by Matt or our archeologist staff. Explain that, but it's, so it's not a, not a dead end. It's just a hoop that we'd have to jump through if we're funding it correctly. So in a lot of cases, we're better off funding, you know, possibly personnel or equipment to do the project and then just streamline it.
You know, I appreciate that, uh, you're wanting to work with the county and I think that's a good idea and we very well may want to do that. You know, another group that's, uh, has done this in the past is LCRI. Have you talked with them at all?
Yeah, uh, I've been sitting in on their meetings as well as, um, Lake Forest Health Partnership and Watershed Council.
Do you feel, have you mentioned to them about this community assistance?
Yeah, I've shared the same announcements with them.
Okay.
As well, so.
Any input from them?
Uh, seeing, my take is, is that a lot of these groups seem pretty tapped out as far as capacity as well, with different revenue sources coming in, so.
Okay.
That's just, okay. It seems like everybody's pretty, pretty well tapped out as far as capacity to take on.
Just basically work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my feeling, you know, maybe if they add capacity or something changes, falls through. I know that they had been, a lot of these groups have been spending a lot of time on the Senate Bill seven six two stuff. And I think they had an application that wasn't approved. So that might open up some capacity for them that they had planned on. So that might be a recent change that I'm aware of. But I'll keep reaching out to them.
And then let's, let's just say that, uh, we put in for this and we do, we are successful. How would the landowner, how would that process look like? What would that look like? Uh, who would they work with?
It would be a combination of whoever the contact with the county is and myself. Trying to come up with, you know, spec out the projects and see. Figure out exactly what it could look like.
And do you, uh, and you've been working on this for a while, so do you have like recommend, recommendation basically on the different projects that would be potentially looking at?
I'm pretty new in the position. I'm still figuring a lot of things out, but, um, being new, I didn't want to miss these deadlines that are coming up, but at least trying to get something put together.
Right.
If it's not at the scope, you know, even something more limited. This, put getting something down on paper and try and get in some for Lake County in the fiscal years.
Um, so fiscal year wise and whatnot, I assume that's federal fiscal year?
Yeah.
So it has to be spent by a certain date?
Um, if we do a five-year project, you know, and obviously that five-year, I think it's usually not, um, amount set of each year, right? At least some projects we have now. It just has to be done by the end of that project, three to five years. Another idea was, I know, um, talking with the Lakeview Rural Fire Board, you know, they had some interest in developing alternate water sources. That could be another easier project. It might be easier to go after beneath the requirements, pretty minimal. The ground disturbance area is pretty minimal. Usually if there's wells that you would like to be developed, um, different water sources around the county. Another idea for funding, it's gone over pretty well.
Yeah, good thought.
Uh, right now, the rural, Lakeview rural is just, is in the middle of developing a well. It's about two hundred twenty gallons and then they're building a pump house for it. And the total cost is probably going to end up around a hundred fifty thousand for that project. So that might be something we're going for, so, um, well every year in a remote location to support the local fire departments.
So when, if we're going to select the point person or someone to, uh, to be the contact person here at the county, what are, would we need to possibly consider for that individual? Do they need, if they're going to be also the contact person for the landowner along with yourself?
Yeah.
To look at projects, I would imagine they're going to need some experience in fire, um.
Yeah, the experience in fire is probably not as important as, uh, uh, somebody who can be a liaison to the landowners if they end up.
Okay.
Landover based projects.
Okay. So with, I understand that BLM's got requirements, but do you, you have to do a NEPA process on private land?
You, so if we're funding, uh, hazardous fuels reduction on private land, we're drilling a well on private land, but we have to go through a, a minimal NEPA process. Usually, I have to do our due diligence to make sure that we're not affecting primarily threatening endangered species or, uh, disturbing archaeological sites. It's basically what it boils down to, so. Which requires some minimal surveying, you know, the NRCS does those surveys in a day. And we're trying, right now, this Summer Lake project, I've been trying to figure out a way to streamline that process on private land. Make it a little easier to get done and something more along the lines of what the NRCS is doing right now.
So like, a private landowner, if they come in, the archaeological comes in and they have a burial ground, for instance, that they didn't even know was there, how's that going to affect them later on?
So that was, uh, that's one of the big concerns that we have. And our process, we've identified is, is we, it affects this immediate project and what we can do and might create some exclusion areas, but it is not part of a permanent record. So, so that, and that was one of the big hangups. I think we can still get these things done and not create any long-term hardships for landlords. If it's something were to pop up that would affect a project immediately. And our archaea, archaeologists and field specialists, Matt Haskins, can kind of outline that process a little better than I can. I'm still getting familiar with it myself, but it wasn't a dead end. Like it, it's been perceived to be in the past, is my understanding.
Well, I think this has a definite benefit to our communities and to our current landowners that normally couldn't afford to have this fuel reduction project go on. And there's other options with Watershed Council and things like that, but you got to be in their project area or, you know, that would be done. Uh, we don't have a natural resource person per se, do we, with the county?
No, but you're the liaison. So I, I think it goes back to capacity again, it's one of the big questions.
Yeah.
Do you have someone with the capacity to take on another agreement project, type project?
Yeah. We could, we could also, I understand, like, LCRI, the Umbrella Watershed and climate lake forest health partnership, they're maxed out on a lot of things, but maybe we should get out of those three, get an, like an advisory council to work with the commissioners and you, to help advise us on what they think would be the best project. I'm just throwing this out there.
So, um, I guess along those lines, I'd mention updating our county CWPP and wildfire protection plan. And I think that's a good starting point to kind of guide the direction for a lot of these projects in the future.
So Daniel Tag is involved in that?
That, that would be Daniel Tag's.
Yeah.
Park.
Yeah, so if we're willing to get the ball rolling on that, like, that's usually, so maybe we could have Daniel be the, be gay.
That, I, that was the first thing that I thought of and I don't want to talk about Daniel as he's not here too much, but I don't, I want to be cautious about throwing too much more on his plate. I definitely want to have the conversation with him before we committed him to that project, so.
I, I think we should do it by all means, but.
Yeah.
And then put the people in place that we think. Because we don't, we're running out of time, right?
Yeah, we have to have this done by April twenty-sixth, then we're supposed to cut off date for this one. And I believe I talked with Autumn Muir. She might, I believe she had put together a proposal for updating the CWPP in the past. That might be worth re-exploiting.
Yeah, we, it's fresh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That might be a good.
We have good CW, although, excuse me. Yeah, CWPP needs updating.
I believe it's two plans right now.
Yeah.
You know, but after talking to Daniel a little bit, the hope was just to combine that into one cohesive plan for the entire county.
I think the last time it was updated was two thousand ten or eleven.
Yeah.
Did it come to us like a couple of years ago and talk about that and then?
This last?
So I'm, I'm mixing a, CWPP is Community Wild Planner Protection Plan.
Yeah.
And she came to us with Community Response.
Oh, yes.
Okay. It's like, so there's a difference there. So I guess if we had her do it, we'd pay her to do it, correct? I don't know that she can, but.
Yeah, it's a capacity thing too, because I know she's, she's got a lot going on right now with the.
I think, I think we, uh.
Watershed.
You know, talked to Daniel, I think that's a good op, option there. I know that would be a little bit out of what he's normally done, but still fits within the wild and urban interface and job that he has, so.
You know, I, I'm not shooting myself in the foot here. Uh, legislative session is coming to a close. I'm going to have more capacity once the session's over. I could potentially try to help out as much as I can, you know, and, and, uh, but I'm going to need some help on it because it's going to be new territory for me. But if it's all it is of being a contact person for community members, I can definitely assist with that. Yeah, I think, uh, getting together, I can send you an example of what we've been successful with in the past.
Right.
I don't think it'll be a lot of work to rewrite. Uh, we just kind of have to come up with a, a kind of longer term strategy and plan for what we'd like to see over the next few years and ask for.
Okay, yeah.
And, and we're going to need that anyway, because I want to make sure that Daniel has a good picture of what we're potentially putting on his plate if we make him the contact person.
Sure.
So, and, and you know, you're, you're plus two, so.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Thank you. So do we need to do a consensus on the, the role of this?
I think we'll have to come back, uh, once we have that conversation with Daniel. What exactly would you like to roll on?
That we, we wanted to go ahead with the project and we can fit the other pieces in.
Yeah.
As we go.
You got my consensus.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good.
Yeah, I know this is important. And we'll figure out the rest as we, we go, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Jesse.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Jesse. Appreciate it. Good seeing you.
Miss Sherry?
Hi there.
Welcome.
Thank you, good to see you.
Yeah.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Oh, I, uh, came to Berry a few weeks ago, um, to talk about the process to, for applying for a grant that would, um, be under the county umbrella. Um, when Nick Warner was here interning with us over the summer, um, we'd started working on, um, trying to solve some problems that we have in the victim services realm. Um, one of the big issues that I come up with, um, with victims is, uh, an offender gets, um, convicted of a crime that involves a monetary, um, payment to the victim. And that judgment gets added to their, you know, to their case, but there's really no way that we can enforce collection of that. So although there's a judgment out there, a lot of times people don't get compensated for the harm that was done to them. Um, this also creates a, a system failure for offenders. A lot of times they get stuck in the system, being on probation, extending probation, getting put in jail because they're, you know, not able to pay. Um, they give up and end up, uh, failing to appear at court appearances and things like that. Um, and we just, uh, trap people in the system longer than maybe necessary. Um, but, you know, the, the victims deserve to be compensated for things that, the harm that was done to them. So we started talking about this and looking at other programs, um, that we could find. Um, some people do restitution courts where the court system kind of does what the drug court system does and brings offenders in and, you know, holds their feet over the fire, so to speak. Um, we were having trouble figuring out how to fund a program that would, um, help pay, uh, victims for their, um, their harm done. And finding a way that offenders could pay, work off, I guess, so to speak, um, those debts. If they were unable to pay monetarily, they could work it off in like a work crew type program. Um, so we started talking with, uh, Jake Greer, um, throwing ideas around. We met with the judge, we met with, um, the defense attorneys, started trying to put some ideas together. And we stopped short with trying to find a way to fund the program. Um, then Jake, uh, brought a grant to my attention that just came open, um, restorative justice grant program through the Criminal Justice Commission. And when I read it, I got excited thinking maybe this was our answer to try to fund a program. In the meantime, I had come across a model of a program from Union County, um, where instead of just putting people on a work crew, um, to help pay their, um, restitution off, um, they did like a, uh, uh, career building type program. So they had a certain, depending on how much money they owed, they would do a certain amount of community service hours through the work program. Then they would meet with a career developer, like through WorkSource. Um, they would identify their, the needs, um, whether it be they need their GED, they, um, maybe college classes, um, skills training, whatever it is. And they built a, a plan for them to work through this program. And at the end of it, they would have done community service hours to help pay the debt off. They would come out with a resume, some new job skills. Um, they would have been either working, working towards their GED or taking college classes through, throughout the program. And, um, they would have to do interviews, uh, mock interviews with, um, businesses, um, have to, uh, apply, you know, a certain amount of places, different things like that. So they'd have a resume when they came out of, of things that they were able to do and maybe improve their situation when they come out. This theoretically, they're being held responsible, taking accountability, doing some work to pay off the debt that they owe. And then hopefully building their skills, um, to change the situation that they're in, reducing the rate of recidivism back into the system. Um, at the end of it, they get their restitution paid off and they have these skills to hopefully go and get a job and, and stay in the workforce and out of the criminal justice system. I liked that model better than, um, just putting somebody on a work crew and, and hoping that they work it off. Um, I thought that, um, you know, in, in Lake County, we, um, a lot of times people just don't know that there's those programs available to them to get their GED. This kind of gives them that push, that incentive. There's a reason to go and get those skills and maybe better their situation. And, um, the program could help pay, uh, for some of those programs, pay for their GED, pay for some college classes, pay for maybe working to get your CDL license, which would be better than working in a restaurant and improve your situation. Um, I met with the WorkSource, um, John Callahan downstairs and he was very excited about it. He thought that, um, bringing people into this program would bring people into his program where he has a lot of ways to qualify people, but he getting people through the door, knowing that he has these things available and giving them a reason to work for it, um, would help his numbers. And so he was really on board. I met with Mr. Greer and Kenny Weinbrenner, who were really excited to, um, have that. Kenny has lots of projects and ideas and he's working really hard. And a lot of times he doesn't get people in his crew to go do the things that he has. And he could do, um, fence building and, um, running a chainsaw and different things that, you know, he could sign off as a certificate that this person has these skills, um, when they're done. And he'd be a great, great reference for a job in the future. Um, so, um, I started to work through this grant process. Um, I, like I said, I talked with Barry. Um, he got me in touch with Sharon Lady, the grant writer. Um, she doesn't have time on her plate to help me write it and I'm really new at this. Um, but she spent a lot of time with me over the phone, Zoom meeting, emailing back and forth, uh, whenever she has time helping me out, um, with this. Um, I met with the, uh, one of the grant, um, the grant administrator people, uh, because I had some questions about how the program that I am wanting to pilot fits into this grant. Um, and, uh, they were excited to hear the idea. They hadn't, um, heard of this kind of restorative justice program before. Um, and they didn't know how it would fit either. This is a brand new grant that they're just rolling out. And so, um, she took the idea and she went and stacked it with her program. Um, I still, we still have some questions. I'm still working through some things, um, to try to get this off the ground. Um, I'm a little bit afraid that this, um, restorative justice program may limit us a whole lot. Um, one thing that I can't do with the funds if we did this grant would be to include people who are already have restitution owed and they've already been through the system, been convicted and they have restitution. I can't include them in this program. I would have to find another funding source to include those people and help them get out of the, the system. Um, so it, this is a completely upfront grant, so I would have to build the program so that, um, a referral comes in from law enforcement. Um, and before the district attorney picks that up and takes it into the system, um, this program would intervene and say, um, we'd meet with the victim, we'd meet with the offender. If everybody's on board, this offender would enter the program before they were even charged with the crime. They would pay for, um, the harm done, um, through going through this program, um, before we go into the justice system. The reason that I'm having a little bit of trouble with this, and I think that it might pin us into a little bit of a corner, is that, um, to keep this victim centered, which is what my job is, we would need to pay the victim off the top right up, upfront. Like here's you, here's your restitution, you're good to go. And then hope that the offender follows through with the program. Um, because it has to stay victim centered and it can't be dependent on the, the outcome of a conviction. So we don't have that carrot dangling like we do in drug court, say. You know, we have, in drug court, we say, here's what you're accused of, here's what would happen if we went to trial likely. You can either go into drug court and stipulate to what you've done and enter a conviction that says that you've done this. And if you successfully complete, then we're good. If you don't, then this is the stipulation, the stipulated prison sentence or jail sentence that you're looking at. You take that carrot away, um, when you say, we're just paying your, your restitution. The victim's good, good to go. We lose a little bit of that leverage of why would they continue through the program? If there's not at the end of it saying that this debt is lifted off of your head and, and you're no longer going to be. If there's not at the end of it saying that this debt is lifted off of your head and and you're no longer going to be prosecuted. The district attorney could at that point pick the case back up and go forward with it. But likely time has gone by, maybe you've lost witnesses and and victim is, has agreed to, you know, be made whole. So you've kind of essentially done a civil compromise where the victim says that they're made whole. You can't really go forward in the justice system after that. So I talked to Department of Justice Victim Services person that leads victim services in Oregon. She says that I shouldn't care about that because I'm I'm making the victim whole. But I have a little bit of trouble with that because I think we're losing that justice piece. I think we're not holding victims account or offenders accountable if there's no no reason that they have to follow through with with doing this. And so, you know, John Callahan already offers these programs through his WorkSource stuff. And he just has a hard time getting people to come in and do them. So I I I think we're losing a little bit there. So I'm kind of stuck here with where I'm at. I don't know that this is the grant for us, but I did want to come down and talk to you guys about it anyway because I may just go forward. Well, one, I've never done a grant before like this. So this is really good experience for me to do it and work through the entire process. But at the end of the day, I don't know that this is the right funding source for us. It may pin us into too much of a corner.
Or leave us with no leverage.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I I feel like we're just creating another.
Yeah, I just want to thank you.
Yeah.
And I I can see you've done a lot of work on this. At the, what exactly is prohibiting us from holding back on making that victim whole? Holding until there has been some sort of, because we're making a victim whole and then we're following through with the actual offender. Why, what, what exactly is the requirement in there that's actually stopping that making us make the victim whole immediately?
Uh, the way, the way that the the grant is structured. So it.
There would be no justice involvement, no justice process involvement. So we couldn't, we couldn't convict him, put him on probation, supervise him, monitor him, anything. It needs to be, I bet we can't do.
No strength test.
We can't do diversion type things. We can't do conditional discharges. They want no justice involvement. They want the perpetrator to to do this on their own. Well, we know that's not gonna happen. So we're trying to figure out how we can sink some teeth into that. So what we, Cherie is trying to figure out how we can sink some teeth in. She got some really good feedback from the Criminal Justice Commission, Rachel McArthur's remains. But some of the things Rachel pointed out probably won't fit with our model that she, with Cherie's model that she's looking at. But it's gonna take some give and take from the district attorney and potentially the courts as well. But then again, what kind of cases are we looking at? They're looking at all, all person, some person oppression crimes. Well, some of our person oppression crimes are assault too. How do we not convict someone of assault too?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's. So we're we're trying to. Cherie, we, county, trying to figure out the waters, how to navigate the waters and how to, how do, how, well, how can we fit Cherie's program into this grant and the expectations they have? And the expectations for the grant are pretty broad right now. I say broad because it's a brand new grant. It's nothing they've ever had out there before. So.
This is, this is my thought. So like, when you have a perpetrator, you have the victim. Your grant is saying, we pay the victim off right away, correct? And.
Well, that's what the grant wants.
Right, yeah. But the problem with that is, is that if they decided to not finish the program, there's no, there's no longer a victim.
Yes.
And so no court is gonna say, well, the victim's been paid off, there's no victim, there's no case.
Yes.
So instead of paying the victim straight away, you put this money into type of an escrow account where that money's there for the victim. They're still a victim. They haven't received the money. And they don't receive that money until the perpetrator goes completely through the program. Then the money's given to the victim.
And that, that's the model that I envision and and the way that I would like to to handle that.
Right.
That doesn't fit in the, in the grant parameters. So we're back to not having the money to fund, fund that model. And so that's, that's where, that's where I'm kind of stuck.
So, so what are, what are, what is the verbiage in your grant that we have to get around to make that work?
So the, the actual wording that she gave me some feedback on says, "The program principles and administrative rule definitions require programs to center the needs of the harmed party, not the desired outcomes of a district attorney's office. Lake County would need to be mindful of explaining how the program centers the needs of the harmed party." So basically, they're saying that this can't be district attorney leverage.
Yeah, you cannot use this.
You can't use that as a district attorney leverage to.
But.
Fix this upfront. There's more to what she, what she said, but.
But what I'm saying is, is that like with Jake and the drug court is, if you go through, I'm simplifying it, so pardon me, but if you go through the drug court, then these charges are dropped or lessened or whatever. And what is the carrot for the perp? You know, if there's gotta be something there, we're willing to help you out here. And you're not gonna get charged with this crime if you pay the victim off and go through this program.
So that's where I'm running into a way of thinking that's unlike my way of thinking.
And yours apparently.
Where we're creating programs to allow offenders grace without a whole lot of accountability. And I see a lot of those programs all over the place. And I guess a feeling that if we just provide these things that give them a, a hand up, but I feel like it's more of a handout and not a hand up. And I am interested in the hand up part of it. So when I'm, when I'm talking to people that are, you know, creating these programs or the legislature who's, who's really putting the rules in place for restorative justice, it feels more like that's the kind of program that they want. That, that we say, we've taken care of the victim, that's good. We've given them the opportunity to do this. If they take it, they take it. If they don't, they don't. So we, we've provided it and that's all we need to do. And I have a little issue with that. I, I want there to be the justice piece as well as the restorative piece. And so.
So and the, and the key emphasis in the restorative justice definition is the needs of the harmed party and foster accountability within the responsible party without resorting to incarceration or criminal conviction. How do we hold, if we're paying the victim off, how do we hold this person's feet to the fire? How do we hold them accountable to finish the program without taking them back to court?
The charges. What, what are the charges? I mean, the victim's been made whole. There's no victim anymore. That's the, that's the problem. So.
You can't do this that way. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I completely understand. I, I totally understand.
I mean, in, in the district attorney, when he would, that he has the option of saying, you know, somebody hits a telephone pole reckless driving. So they can make the power company whole if they want to do a civil compromise. So he would say, I'm willing to allow this to be a civil compromise. You pay the damage and I won't go forward with charges. He's, he always has the option to do that. But as soon as that victim accepts that payment, there is no longer the ability for the district, district attorney to go forward. So it has to be agreed on ahead of time that he doesn't wanna pursue charges. So I think we'd be, we'd be running into that realm if we paid the victim, like you said. We would, the victim's been made whole. It's a civil compromise at that point and no longer able to be in, to go forward. And if that's the case, then there's nothing saying that an offender needs to do this program. They can choose whether or not they wanna finish and there's no repercussions to that. And that's the piece that I'm having problems with, with the, this grant. Holding us to that tightly into that box.
What percent of the victims roughly would you say get some type of restitution right now?
So that get their restitution paid?
Pretty low.
Yeah. I think when we looked at it with the court last year or twenty, I think we were in twenty twenty one, maybe it was twenty twenty. There's fifty three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars owed in restitution. I don't know how that breaks down to per victim, but about thirty three percent of the entire district attorney caseload is property type crimes where, you know, someone's been harmed property wise. So that's a pretty big chunk of the, of the caseload really for one, one specific crime type. And that affects our community. Like, you know, when you hear people talk about crime in Lake County, they're, they talk about their stuff getting stolen and their things getting vandalized and and that kind of thing. And, you know, I don't know how much this would help that, but I, I feel like, and I, and the way that I envision it is that if we, if we hold somebody accountable and they, they work that off and improve their skills and get an opportunity to do something better, then, then they would grab onto that. And, you know, have, have a different way. It would take some stuff off of the DA's plate who's, you know, incredibly busy. And so when you have C misdemeanor property crimes and you have, you know, huge felony crimes, you put your efforts up here. And a lot of these things just kind of fall by the wayside or don't get the kind of attention that people need them to get. And even if we do get all the way through the system, there's no way to make them pay for that restitution once a judgment is entered. So sometimes it goes to collections or they just sit out there for ten years until they expire and that's that. So it's a frustration.
I love your vision. I, once again, the state is hampering it.
Yeah. But I think.
My, my problem is, is that a common criminal is going to say, yeah, I'll do this. And then they'll bug out. And the county will be stuck paying the restitution. And I don't, I'm a hundred percent with you. I wanna give somebody a hand up, even the, even the convicts, you know, to try to improve their life. But I just think this is gonna be a way out for ninety percent of, you know.
I, I don't want to run a program that's going to be a way out. And, and so I.
We, we gotta find a hook somewhere. And, you know, that's the only way that I can support it is there's some kind of hook where we have some leverage.
Yeah.
And we're gonna look at some language, some different language, some different terminology. Instead of restitution, some compensation, damage compensation or loss compensation, something. Cause I think we can fit back into that if we're doing the compensation piece. As a, and then have the charges hanging out there, then the stick, if they don't do the program, then we can move forward. But then again, we gotta talk. We've already paid the victim off. Is it really a victim?
Yeah, see.
But there could be some language in there, much like treatment court. Complete program, you go to prison. You complete the program, the victim's paid, yes. You complete the program, there is no conviction. We agree now, right here, now that there is a, a victim.
Right.
We're gonna pay him off through compensation. So it's not restitution, it's a kind of compensation. We're gonna look at some different verb usage and I.
And we could throw that language out there and see if it, it falls. They may say, no, this just doesn't fall into what we envision restorative justice being. And, and if that's the case, fine. But like Jake said, I think that we can work on trying to keep our vision for this program and maybe word it correctly without getting us pinned into that corner. I don't want to be pinned into that corner.
Yeah, I.
And have to spend the money that way when I don't feel like that's productive.
Yeah, if, if, if the criminal's not actually, if there's no accountability, then there is no justice.
Yeah.
So I don't think that restorative justice is an actual good term for this kind of grant program. It's more of just an insurance compensation program and I don't know if I really wanna have, be part of that.
Yeah.
I, I really appreciate the work that you've done on this. I, I, I hear you, what you're trying to do, what you guys have tried to put together. Been part of these discussions for a while. We know this, there's, that we need to do something. But I don't, personally where I'm at right now is I don't think that this is where we wanna go. You know, when you sit at Caesar's table and you take his money, he's gonna have a demand on you. And this is the way it's going right now, especially in the state.
Yeah.
Really appreciate what the work you've done.
Well, I, I'm gonna continue. Sharon has, you know, assured me that we could maybe find some different funding sources. So if this doesn't work out and, and we, you know, we just can't do what I feel like this needs to do, then I don't wanna just throw this out the window. I would really like to try to find and see if it's something that'll benefit our community, see if it's something that'll work, see if we can get offenders to buy into this and, and do something different. And if not, okay, but, but I don't wanna compromise what I, I think we should be trying to do.
Right. And we don't wanna compromise Lake County's values either. Okay, sorry.
And if they, if the per willingly goes into the program, you know, with, I don't, for a better word, with something over their head, I don't see the problem. And so, like I said before, your, your vision is wonderful. I love the whole vision. It's just the paragraphs that the state's throwing in there that are botching it. So don't give up on it. I think we can get there. It's just a matter of spending the time to do it.
Yeah.
You know, I would say yes on this if the paragraphs that the state's throwing in there weren't in there.
This just happened on Thursday, so I was like, oh. I've been working, 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 and then I got this feedback and I was like, I don't know. And I don't wanna throw something at the wall and hope it sticks. I want it, if I'm gonna put the effort into a program, I want it to be something that is wild.
And that language definitely changes the whole nature of the program. So, yeah.
Did you see other counties are doing this?
So Union County is the only one that, that I know of that has this model that, that they're doing. And I talked to the lady that runs that program. She's awesome lady. They have had to get really creative with how they do their funding. So they kind of have to backdoor it. So they, they have a justice reinvestment grant like what Jake has. They can't use that funds for this program because of their stipulations to not use it that way. So they give a portion of their money to somebody else who then in turn gives money from their budget to them. So it's kind of backdooring how they get their funding. And it's just with, you know, collaborating with other agencies that, that get grants and moving money around in different ways. So they've gotten, gotten around it, but ultimately their funds come from supervision fees that come into the parole and probation office. And the state has just cut those, so they can't collect supervision fees anymore. And so, yeah, they're, they're gonna be struggling finding their funding source going forward as well, so. Yeah, yeah. I'll give you a copy of what it would look like, the matrix. So across the top, it's how much money. So across the top, it's, um, how much money is owed? The amount of time that they'd be in the program and then what they would maybe be required. And this is just a model of what I think it would maybe look like. Um, let's just a draft of that, so.
And, and just for clarification, this isn't anything I'm, has nothing to do with community corrections. This is Cherie's ball. Um, I, I'd like to help Cherie out with some of the language and navigate some of these, right, road, roadblocks.
Jake's been a lot, he's, he's worked in this group a lot.
So that, that's, that's my involvement, cause I'm a municipal Cherie, so it's a Cherie's program, so, yeah.
You know, you know, I appreciate you guys.
He's been a lot.
What might work is if they don't complete the program, the cost of the program to the county could be charged.
But how's the county gonna collect it? Just, it's sit there just like restitution does though, Joe? I, does the county wanna be saddled with that?
I don't, I'm, I'm not, it's supposed to, based on supervision. It could be theft three, chocolate thing, it could be graffiti where they're not doing enough damage to, to raise to the felony, where it's a misdemeanor. Um, it, it could be scraping someone's car with a key, egging someone's car, which doesn't raise the level of felony. So how do we hold those folks accountable and how do we go back after? Cause they're not on supervision, if they're on supervision, of course, we, we push them to pay restitution. They're not on supervision, I mean, we don't have, we have no, there's no accountability.
Yeah.
Um, some folks find that internally and can make it happen. Other folks, fifty four thousand, sixty three thousand, whatever dollars hanging out in restitution, those folks don't.
Find the hook.
I'm trying. I appreciate you guys and, and your time and, um, and hopefully I will come back with something that will work.
All right, we, we have faith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cherie.
See you, buddy. Thank you.
See you, Jake.
Should we take a break or do we have the timed item for ten, right?
You have a timed item for ten, Dave Knowles and Eric will be here at ten thirty.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, fairgrounds letter, real quick, the fairgrounds letter.
Oh, yeah.
So I read through it, looks good. You wanna kinda give public a little update on it? The one that Sharon put together?
So with her grant for the indoor arena, we couldn't, we couldn't do that one because of. So this is a, um, RV parks and rec grant, which being on that committee, they focus on RV parks. They focus on vaulted restrooms, um, parking lot improvements, um, electrical improvements. And so Ronnie and Sharon have been working on stuff that fits into the parks and rec, you know, goals. And so, um, that's pretty much what this is working on is vaulted ceilings, some improvements to the RV park and fairgrounds. Vaulted, excuse me, vaulted ceiling, vaulted restrooms, another set of restrooms, um. And they're virtually all concrete, they're ma- virtually maintenance free, there's no plumbing. Um, they talked about putting plumbing in them, but that just raises more trouble and more maintenance, so.
So what's the, you know, full ask on the, the grant?
Hundred and seventy, isn't it?
A hundred and seventy is, um, what we secured the matching funds of, or Lake County secured the matching fund, a hundred and seventy thousand. But the estimated costs.
Eight hundred and fifty.
Is eight hundred and fifty. So are we asking for eight fifty or are we asking for closer to seven hundred grand? And gonna use some of the matching?
I do not know that.
Oh, okay.
I have a fair board meeting tonight, I can give you more information tomorrow.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with the letter, I would just, you know, maybe make that a little bit more clear as to what we're actually asking for. You know, the actual final sum, because we've got the hundred and seventy, um, um, and we've got the cost outlined. Um, but rather than have them do the math, uh, we'll just state exactly what we're asking for.
Okay, I'll ask them to make just. They did, I didn't realize that they didn't have the actual, I'm assuming it's eight hundred and fifty, but I don't wanna assume.
Right, and the, uh, they're, they're, it kind of talks about the economic impact of the fairgrounds. You know, two million dollars, it goes back to an annual, um, that's on the second page. Um, gives a little bit more detail on some of those other things, which are all good points and factual points to put in the letter. But, um, you have a little, little point in bold saying, you know, this is what we're asking for.
I'll do that tonight.
Sounds awesome.
Looks like the, some of the hundred and seventy thousand dollars is in-kind work contributions.
Okay.
Uh, I was just curious, I assume some of that is also cash. What if that money is becoming, you know? I'll ask them that too. What are cash matches, what the in-kind matches and what the total cost of?
Yeah, like have an attachment sheet or something to the letter where it just has those three or four points.
Good idea.
All right, um, do we wanna, do you wanna take a three or four minute break?
Yeah, let's, just take a little break and then we'll start. The, the meeting. So Michelle, do you wanna come up please?
Yeah, well, we'll share it fifty fifty with Kathy.
Yeah. How about forty nine fifty one?
No, I'll take the fifty one.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So good to see you guys.
You too.
Guess what I wanna talk about?
How about code enforcement?
Should we do that? I invited your code enforcement officer here, we met. Um, it, it took a little bit of time, just been kind of crazy busy. Um, so I, I've been looking over your, uh, building code, uh, job description. And it has said that you are, the position is, uh, between twenty six ninety seven and thirty four forty one monthly. So we have discussed whatever the thirty four percent that the town was gonna be. And I was going off the one hundred and twenty five thousand, is that still effective or?
Hmm, that would seem high. I mean, I would like it to be, but that, that's a lot of numbers.
I just wanna make sure that I understand the, the dollar commitment for the town.
Okay.
Um, and, and so we can discuss that, um.
Uh, I thought it was closer to the a hundred thousand after.
Yeah, Jay, I was gonna, I'm already.
Yeah, I don't have that with me, but, um, I would guess it's close to a hundred, fully loaded, you know.
Okay, so.
With the bench, that's good, okay.
Which I bet.
So I was going off one twenty five, which would mean that the town's portion would be forty two five. But it sounds like that might be lower.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Might be down to like thirty four.
Thirty four?
Well, you know, if we're using real round numbers.
We said how.
We say it's a hundred thousand.
Okay, so thirty four five, that's great, no problem. So, um, part of what I was wanting from commissioners was, um, discussed with, uh, Jason. Right?
Yeah.
And I was gonna mess with you a little bit.
Okay.
Just everybody told me not to.
Okay, all right, good, well, what's?
So thirty four percent, um, if we divide that by twelve months, an annual calendar going from January first to December thirty first, um, that would give an equivalent of four months of time that the town would be buying. Or we could do it, um, for the four months would be six hundred and forty hours. But what we came to, which would mean that I could say, well, because you haven't really given me great per, like, parameters, I would take April, June, July. Full time, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I was like.
We would say no.
Yeah.
And then I would say, tell me what would work for you guys, I'm just trying to get the discussion going. But what we came to was, um, because of the weather, you know, January, February, we're not gonna be getting a whole bunch of time because of snow and mud and, um, probably the same for November, December. So right away, we're all on kind of a March to late September, late October. Is when really the effective part of the work will begin and that we can enforce people getting all of their trash and whatever we're trying to accomplish off their property. So, um, what I'd like is to see if, if we could have, um, one day a week for the year, every week, one day, for, um, code enforcement to go out and patrol into Lakeview. With a second day of him, um, uh, bringing it up to speed, putting in the computer, sharing documents and letting us know what properties have been, um, looked at or tagged or enforced. Um, as well as, um, having us be able to communicate to him what, what calls we're receiving as well. We also discussed, um, having the town link to the county for, uh, the online complaint form. So that we can send people to the website for anonymous, um, reporting. So people can report online and that they would go straight away to the code enforcement officer. And then we could have reports given to the town. Um, I'd, I'd effectively like to have at least a monthly report check in from him. Um, if not, uh, having some sort of shared document where we can just go in and look and see what's happening. Um, since we won't see him every single day. Um, and so I think that that would work. Um, I think that Jason's waiting for some connection to the law enforcement database or?
Data cell, uh, inspection program, it's what the building inspectors use. And we have, it's, I'm scheduled in the next update, but the administrators of that program can't get me any sooner in summertime for that reasons.
Right.
So that, and that'll work, that'll work great for us. Um, so that's my proposal and to see if that would work for the county for what the town is paying for. Or however you would like to structure it, at least we've got some sort of parameters that we can work within. Um, and that, um, you guys can direct how you would like it to work for the town. Um, if it's every other week, if it's a consolidated amount of time during those months that we know people will be out and about and able to get to dump and manage the enforcement, um, code and JCP now also be able to get to properties. Um, if they're snowed in or if we just get a random amount of snow, whatever. Um, but I would like that.
Okay.
And this is a work session, right?
Yes.
Yes, um, and you're saying you, you're kind of looking at monthly reports?
I am.
Would quarterlies work for you?
Um, we could start with quarterlies, I, I'd really like to see, well.
Right off the bat at least, you know, you'd kinda like to see what some of the.
Yeah, because we're gonna get flooded right off the bat. Because people are really very interested in this, people have been lining up for a very long time. I have a list already compiled, um, for somewhat of the like, what we'd like to have or see in the first sixty days. Because these are, you know, frequent offenders of code enforcement and there's been no teeth behind what we're asking them to do. Um, uh, and as it tapers out, then yeah, quarterly reports would probably work as well.
Are you looking at an agreement on a yearly basis or like, or ongoing? Uh, you wanna do it, or is the town interested in maybe doing a, a three-year agreement or something like this?
Um. I, I think in the beginning of, well, I have to ask counsel on this.
Yeah, maybe like a year that just rolls over and.
Right, because there is, I think this is a program that's being built from the bottom up. And I think this first year is where we run everything.
Oh, we're learning as we go, we're learning every day, so.
Um, and so with that said, it's going to create a change and a refinement of the agreement moving forward. And so in that case, maybe year two, we get into a three-year contract. But year one, um, why don't we leave it to where we can just be flexible within the contract for changes and, and improvements? Um, although it's not up to me, honestly, I can take back to counsel saying, you know, you would prefer to be into a three-year contract. Um.
I'm not, I'm not stating one way or the other, I'm kinda asking what the, what you guys are thinking about. I do have another question, I'll just forgive me and then I'll shut up so the other commissioner can ask their questions. Uh, just, this has never really been kinda clear in my head. What ordinances would our, the enforcement officer be enforcing within the town jurisdiction of Lakeview?
So what Jason had asked and I agree with him, and I'm gonna have to work on it while we get ready to, you know, put in our memo of understanding, um, is that the town needs to really align better with our code enforcement to the county. And which is what I need to work on so that it's, um, not as confusing and people, and it's easier for Jason to work within the town and then shift gears and go on to the county. So that's a, a work, that's a checklist item for me to do.
Okay, I mean, we're making changes to our ordinances, I mean, tomorrow we have a hearing.
Final hearing.
Right, final hearing on our ordinance, so we've been making changes as we go. So I just wanna make sure that if he's going to be tasked with doing enforcement for the town, that he has, you know,
Directive.
Pretty straightforward directive and isn't doing anything too different from what the county's doing.
Exactly. Yeah, so we'll, we'll mirror that as we are mirroring the job ordinance so that we're in sort of a lockstep together.
That helps.
Instead of having us being like kind of crazy over here and you guys over here, we're not meeting with that or.
That helps.
Yeah, that, that seems like true.
Um, I'm hearing about the day a week, that means the other four days or, or some, the other three and a half days are somewhere else in the county.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that is equivalent to about thirty four percent. Um, what, what is the agreement with, uh, like the sheriff's department? Do you have with them? Or protection of the community?
You know, I'd have to look at that, you still be a side ball right there.
Do you get reports from them?
We do, we get daily reports, we get weekly reports from them, yes. Uh, who's on, on task, who's on duty, what they're up to, um, what kind of calls they've been out for, yes. Um, the specifics I can get over to you, I, I'd be happy to send the contract that we have with the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I knew the sheriff, uh, reports out on something, but I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Compare, comparatively between this position and sheriff's office.
Well, I wouldn't want it as detailed as the sheriff's. Well, I wouldn't want it as detailed as the sheriff's department. Um one, because we're not paying for it to be that detailed and two, it would take more time and add rather the time we spent out rather than on administrative tasks.
Um the online complaint form, do we have an online?
Yeah.
Form and is it anonymous?
Yes. It can be, it, so if people submit one without putting their name on there, I still accept it, same thing with voicemails, emails, I do not pursue the uh name of the person who submitted the report. If they choose to put their name on there, I still keep it anonymous so that there's a uniform policy of anonymity within there, so I can I'll have the contact info if I need more information to talk to somebody and get specific information on the complaint, but I do not give that information out to anybody, it stays with me. So even if they put their name on there, it is still anonymous.
Cause I thought we were also being careful about if we have a repeat complainer, I ensure that that person is also.
Yes, yes, it's in codes, so I I am the only one who knows, if a person puts their name down, I am the only one who knows it and it stays here with me. I do not give it out to anybody because there's too much potential for retribution on certain properties, so it is a blanket policy of anonymity, either way.
Okay. So my 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 only concern is is that we let Jason run with the project and he's doing a fabulous job. I just wanna make sure the county or the town, either one, isn't micromanaging his work. Um you know, we have learned as a board of commissioners so much from starting at the bottom and trying to figure this whole thing out and Jason's provided so much information. I just don't wanna hammer that in any way, that's my only concern. Um Jason would, putting the town on right now for one day a week, how would that affect you? Will it, will it cause other parts of the county not being?
Well, taking on this the the town in any thirty percent manner is going to slow down my work in the rest of the county, that's what happens when you take thirty percent of your workload and shift it in one direction. That being said, everything is complaint-driven and I deal with it. I don't take on any more casework than I can confidently manage, so some cases just take longer than others, by virtue of it's better to deal with things confidently in less cases than to take on more cases and lose them all. So taking on the city, the reality is, if she has a list of twenty houses right off the bat, that's gonna take up more than thirty percent of my time to get going, but as I work through them, on the back end of it, there may not be another twenty houses or there could be twenty more, it it's having the freedom to work it accordingly to give the town more time or less time as needed versus a strict thirty percent a week gives me the flexibility to work things in a more organized manner, but both parties have to understand, i- if if I'm to do this at my discretion, as soon as we open up, I'm probably gonna dedicate more than thirty percent of my of my weekly time to the city initially. It's just to get the ball rolling, get the initial inspections, letters, et cetera, and then once things are lined up with each case individually, that may drop off a little or it may maintain at that thirty-ish percent level, but it's easier to organize if I've got that freedom to move my time accordingly. Now, that being said, I'll ultimately deal with you guys' agreed to, you know, that's I'll make it work. So I think I can manage the time a lot better than a strict thirty percent a week, but if that's what you agree to, that's how I'll do it.
So what you're you're saying is the more consistent we are as both the town and the county,
Yes.
it will likely save us time.
Yes.
In the long run.
Mm-hmm. And one of those things we really need is for the town and the county to be working on the same ordinance, yes. Um the easiest thing that would be, um at least to start off with, is the city to adopt ordinance one-one-six and thirty-nine because those are the two main ones, um and then as that gets going, uh just like I do um code enforcement with the building inspector and with land use departments, if they wish to incorporate me into that section of it as well, I can. Um essentially, it's gonna be any, any administrative type ordinance, anything that's not strictly law enforcement is what I deal with, so um ninety percent of my work is ordinance one-one-six and thirty-nine, but as needed, I work with the building inspector and with land use department for zoning up, zoning and land use, so I'll do that as well uh for the city. Or if they have other ordinances of the county that may, or just specific city ones that need that type of enforcement, we can incorporate that in the use as the city sees fit.
So so Michelle, uh if we get to the point in time, let's say we make the agreement here of what we've been talking about and uh we get to a point in time where we just see fluctuations, there's, you know, maybe not necessarily thirty-four percent of the work happening uh two years from now. Uh but, you know, two years and three months, then it jumps up again, you know what I mean? There's gonna be some fluctuation in it, is is the town council uh willing to be flexible as as workload comes and goes?
Well, I think that's just a a common sense.
Yeah.
Um but I can get back to you on that, I I think that works out the best. It it's also because this is a working document and there has been really no agreements made other than just sort of a skeleton, we may wanna start out at a lower amount for this first year. Maybe thirty percent is too much while while we're figuring it out. Maybe that's making too much of a burden on him and then year two we step up or we take it in tiers, maybe we do ten and twenty then thirty while the program is being built. Um there's all sorts of ways to go about it. Um I think the most important thing is that we align with you, with your ordinances and that we align with what is best for um Jason and how he's putting this together and that we understand that it is a flexible, it's a flexible living job that takes in a lot of variables of consideration, weather, people, you know, it it there there's just unknowns that you can't predict, so um I think that's okay and I'm sure the town council would be in agreement to that, so I don't I don't know how you want to drive it, um but I certainly think that um the town is ready to move into a memo of understanding angle. Um somewhat of a timeline that Jason and I talked about is perhaps having him start April first. Um maybe the better time for him to start would be at the first of the annual budget year in in June, I don't know. Uh um but these are all things that we can push around now that we know what we're working with, we can sort of refine that and say, here's how we expect the first year to go. It's gonna be super fluctuating and very um fluid. Year two, we're gonna get a little bit more understanding and we're gonna get more structure to it and year three, we should, and maybe that's why we do it through your contract. Um but there's a awesome opportunity for this, but the two main goals for me is to get it going so that the county and the town both know that we're working in their best benefit and to um figure out exactly how much you guys want me to pay into and what, how much I can expect the work to be.
Okay, um I think based on what Jason's kind of presented to us is that he will likely be giving more than that thirty to thirty-five percent
Mm-hmm.
right off the bat. Um also, if you're going to be adopting one-sixteen, bear in mind that our final hearing is tomorrow for one-sixteen, so if you'd like to attend or if you'd like a copy of the draft.
No, I'll I'll come over and attend.
Okay, yeah, and we can definitely get you a copy of the current draft because it is not the same version as, you know, everybody's home. So uh it will look different. Um the other thing, just just thought, as this is a work session, I'm I'm amenable to just keeping it a flat rate or something, like having a fixed figure that probably might even come in closer to say twenty percent or twenty-five percent or something and just keeping it at that so that you know what to expect and that way it prevents us from getting into the weeds on, you know, okay, is he spending his thirteen point four hours per week? Um you know, here versus here, you know, that way we just like, hey, this is fixed.
Yeah, I I don't wanna do that.
Maybe it's a fifth, a fifth of the hundred though.
Yeah, and I don't wanna do that to him either because he's got a rhythm and I don't wanna keep bouncing into that by saying, well, I
Right.
Give me one twenty-two hours.
No, it's just, and and see, we and and we would definitely be able to, I think, I think I'd be amenable to, if you wanted to present like a, an update, you know, basically to them and give you kind of a a an idea of what he's been working on within the town, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh but just a basic contribution, you know, to the cost that we've put into our budget to make sure that he's available for those services.
Yeah.
Um even if it doesn't come out to that exact thirty-four percent, you know, based on population metrics, that's it, that's not really a big deal to me, so.
Well, what what I think is great is that contracts can always be amended and I think that if we get into something that isn't working for anybody in particular for Jason, that we should probably amend the contract and have that be a document as the living document instead of having it locked in and that's forever and ever amen. I would rather have a more flexible living document um to work within for everybody's benefit.
I like your idea of like doing it in tiers.
Hmm.
Number one, I don't think we should get in a contract until you guys get your um
Ordinances.
Ordinances in line with the counties because otherwise we're going to be
Working uphill.
Stray, yeah.
Yeah.
And so when you get, and that takes two meetings, two hearings.
To change your ordinances, so it takes two hearings.
For.
Yeah, but so I think you more of like a June first would probably be a better and
Yeah, would give you guys more time, yeah.
breathable timeline for me to get through council and to align with what you guys have going on and um and to allow Jason to get his feet more sturdily underneath him. Um but that's just me knowing that I have, you know, I don't wanna keep myself in the foot for too little time.
And and we could move up the amount of time and steps, you know, which would be, what do you think about that, Jason?
That's fine, if we do something more along ten or twenty percent, then you can just give me the list of your most problematic properties and I'll start, you know, each week with the four or five, whatever I can get done in in whatever I can manage in in that time and just work through the list rather than going for them all at once, I'll start with, you know, I'll treat it as an order of priority and just kind of work through and then as the complaints come in, they will take priority over that list because they're coming from citizens and I'll just treat it in that manner and yeah, as you guys work out the percentage deal, I'll basically add to, I'll I'll expand that priority list for the city.
Well, that would keep us from other parts of the county being set aside, I don't wanna do.
Yeah.
And so as we eat, we can ease into it, so just being hammered. Um and then each year we can raise the amount of work. Yeah.
Yeah. I do like that idea because it it makes all of us grow with the position.
Mm-hmm, there you go, it's good, I like it.
So do you wanna start off uh Ju- June first as a first year?
Whenever you get your ordinances.
And then it would be ten percent, then twenty percent, then thirty percent.
Sounds good to me, yeah.
Would that work for everybody? Okay, then I'll get going on that, um and then uh get going on our ordinances so we align uh more with the county side, I think that's just a good, good thing anyways.
And you have the copies of those ordinances?
I can download them, please. And then um and then we will uh link also to, so we'll all be the same.
Okay.
I'm so happy, thank you.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
See you soon.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mister Knowles?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
You're on, let's go.
You're on deck.
Alright. Thank you guys for having us, so this is Eric Monk, he's our acting president of the ski club, we're gonna have Larry.
Hi.
Our vice president here, but he got called out on another project, so he's not able to be with us today. And so this is uh probably one of our, what we're gonna call it, one of the funner things we're gonna talk about today is the ski area. And to kind of explain to you where, why we're getting where we're at and what's going on with the ski area, you might be aware of it, we're in what they call a pandemic and they've been limiting skier access to a lot of those ski areas and in the last two years, we've seen our skier number visits more than double. And we've seen our ski area at maximum capacity and we've seen lift lines which we haven't seen before and we've seen our old chairlift working us a little hard out. So our chairlift was a used lift bought in Olo from Squaw Valley for fifty thousand dollars and we have moved up and then reinstalled. So it had a little time on it before we got it and it's twenty-two years later here we're sitting at it. We get inspected by um our insurance company and by their airway, cramway inspectors at the ski lift and they're always pointing out directions of for us to improve or looking at things that could possibly be a potential hazard to us. And that's the primary reason what started this whole thing. We were already aware that our existing safety system was obsolete and failing. If every shiv tower has more than one brittle bar that activates if cable was to come off and there's a hundred and sixty-seven safety locations on our chairlift that has a potential of stopping the lift for us to to find out if there's a mechanical problem or not. And those are run by old-style mechanical relays that are starting to fail. So what we're experiencing is we'll be operating a lift and we'll throw a fault and this lift will stop and the hill manager has to make a decision, is it really broken or is this a wiring problem and it's been a haunting thing for us. The start of the season was a real running curve with our new hill manager, but it's plagued us in the past, Jim Copeland and I have lost, and two years ago, we lost two and a half days of operation because of this in busy times where we had, we show up on a Saturday, we have a parking lot full, people there to go and we can't make the lift run and we couldn't call it safe, we hadn't called it safe. And so where this is going is to upgrade the safety system, there's a a company in place that's done over sixty of these retrofits to take the safety system from old school to new school to newer technology and it's basically just kind of like taking the radiator cap off and driving a new car underneath it as far as what makes the drive system work. And so the bottom line to that, that 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 cost to the club will be ninety-one thousand dollars for him to do that. It's a bid from him for seventy-one thousand and it's twenty thousand dollars of hard costs for per diem, for travel. Uh he's only licensed to do low voltage wiring, so we had to hire in a, bring in a electrician to do the high voltage wiring and all those those things, so it's twenty thousand dollars on top of the seventy-one five, so that's major safety system redo is ninety-one five. That is a, that's a must-do for us if we're coming to a point where we're gonna be, we've been playing magical, switching the relays around, taking relays that were heavily being used and putting them in areas of the mock and to keep the system going and those relays are now obsolete and we can't replace them, so that's that's our number one concern and that's what started this whole process. Then then the next thing is, there's three categories on this budget, you guys have seen it, there are, and I'm I'm basically calling a major lift maintenance and it has to do with uh the bowl wheel on the top, a rubber liner that the cable runs around, it's starting to wear, the cable's getting close to wearing, replacing that rubber liner shiv, replacing the bearings in the top bowl wheel and also replacing the the haulback cable for the counterweight that keeps everything taut. That has been found to uh have a problem and it and that needs to be mandatory, we have to have that changed in the next two years. And to bring up a crane up there to lift a twenty thousand pound weight is expensive and while that weight's off, the cable's down, we could do some other work. The shiv tower alignment bushings have never been changed, they weren't changed, replaced when it was relocated in Lakeview. And, and, uh, we just had an inspection three weeks ago and Tom said that. Our tower three on the upcoming side needed to be changed, it's kind of caving up. And so we know we've got one we gotta change, but the rest of them are all, they all kind of wear together. So we're looking at that, so that's sixty-four thousand dollars of major lift experience. And then to kind of, to kind of not to threaten you or anything like that, but in January thirteenth, Mount Bachelor's tower four.
Wheel.
Kind of reel at the top, the bearings failed on it and it's a catastrophic problem. It has the potential of actually dropping and hitting the ground and sending people in chairs in places they don't wanna go. And, uh, you see this big shack coming out, there's bearings on it and those bearings fail, that thing, gravity takes over and it heads to the earth. And the bad things happen and that's what we're trying to prevent with that, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars worth of stuff there. Um. And to break it on down a little farther, we have, I call it, uh, to another twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars of other safety improvements. And one is a backup motor, we have a nineteen fifty-seven Chrysler, uh, gas motor, a hundred and forty horse, barely is enough to pull the lift around. And it's hard starting and has points in it. It has an oil bath air filter, it has a canister oil filter, I mean, it's just old school like none other. And then we, we have to depend on that maybe every day to start and run it, that's our, we've reduced power, that's what's gonna unload it. Sure, it's been passing inspections but just barely and it's, we've located a, another yawn lift. That was located in a non-power sourced area, so they had two diesel engines. They were like a Jack and Jill and they were running one one day and one the other day. They finally got power to it, they took one diesel out. And it's been retrofitted to the new safety system that we're about ready to fly and it has over five thousand dollars with it. It's safety stuff on it that was coming with it, anyway. That's two thousand dollars plus transportation, yeah, and that's fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we have ninety-six hundred dollars for the Coyote Catch Trail. Three years ago, we have a black diamond run, you have to diver, traverse the hill, you can go around it with some nice powder and you get down to the bottom. And you got this, we got, it's a steep little area with some trees and stuff and when they ski out, it's kind of like a rep. And you get going and sometimes you get out of control, we had a gal got broke up down there, we couldn't get the sled in from the top, we couldn't get a snowmobile to her. We had to pack it, we had to drag the sled into her and then drag her out and then we're, it's so flat out there, we had to get someone to pull her to the ski patrol. And it's been my goal was to put a safety catch road in the bottom, at the bottom, to, 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 two things, it will tie some more skiers to use that area of the hill, but also make a safer exit. And you have to traverse back, there's a little, little rise closer to our hat pipe. And you have to kind of haul them in to get out so you can get to the lift without having to dog pound or walk out. And that, that's in that, that's in that budget. And the last thing is a five thousand dollar, um, cell tower enhancement. A repeater type of thing up the top of the hill, we do not have good cell service, we have it the hill. About midway up, I know the guy that drives a cat at night, if something goes sour, he has to walk out to get the cell service to get help. And he's by himself and also where our ski patrol has somebody go down and they wanna activate EMS, they have a radio down at the lodge to have them call EMS to get the ambulance coming. And also, we would like to have that, have cell service up there, so anyway. I've kind of explained some of the nuts and bolts, what makes up this big package. Uh, and everybody realizes this is through the Oregon State Parks and Rec Grant Program. Which normally a forty percent match because of our population or lack of population, we only have to do a twenty percent match. And that's what we're asking you guys to help us with of that. Also, what I didn't talk about is we're suffering from a Model T garage and a Cadillac snow cats, our cats no longer fit in our shop. Our old cats used to be fourteen feet wide and now our new cats are sixteen feet wide with eighteen foot, eighteen foot dumbo wings that flop out. So every time the cat goes in the shop, we have to fold everything up and then scrape the doors on both sides going in. And physically the cats are too long, the doors won't lock or close or secure. We wanna put a sixteen foot wing on the, on the shop going out. So we can store our snowmobile safely in off-season. And be able to get our cats inside to work on and then close the door and turn the heat on and feed on it during season. And, uh, also when that, when that wing is built, we wanna put a little lean to say. So our snowmobiles during season have a place to sit out, out, it's not under the snow. And our ski patrol sled and our service sled can hang on the wall, so when we do need to go act, to go after somebody with a snowmobile, the sled is right there currently. The mechanics of getting a sled into the snowmobile are kind of clunky and this would be a perfect place for it to all be together in one pack. So, and that's a, a twenty thousand dollar, uh, bid item that we're looking at. And I've talked to you two guys individually about this, but that's something that's not in the compass of this grant application because it's an existing building. And that was something we're asking for, this twenty thousand dollars to, to do that, to expand our shop.
Right.
So.
And that's separate from the actual.
That's, that's not included in this, uh, grant application also, so it's, we're looking for fifty-one nine for the twenty percent match. And that's, that's involving five thousand dollars of in-kind labor from the club, so they got some skin in the game and this, this still here. So fire away with whatever questions you guys got.
Well, my next question was how much of that fifty thousand was going to be considered in kind, so.
It's actually, the match is actually fifty-five, fifty-six nine, and five thousand sort of come out of the club.
Or the match, but it's not. Okay.
And.
Gotcha.
And the club has been spending a lot of money on other projects, as we sit in here right now, they are putting in a thirty-two thousand dollar. Hood assembly in our kitchen with the heated input air and safety fire suppression and all that fun stuff.
Yeah.
And the club has been spending quite a bit of money on other projects and you've seen other grant applications go through, we've got our towers painted, we've got the chair pads replaced. The club's been putting a lot of their resources back into, that's what the club is for, is to keep the state forward motion, so.
So just to technicality, our paperwork says fifty thousand nine hundred and ten.
Um. On the upper right-hand corner, I'm not, because this was a moving target, it should have said fifty-five nine eighteen for our grants, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, so that's. That's what we're going for with the state, that's the amount that we're asking for at the state level is two seventy-nine five ninety. Twenty percent of that is fifty-five nine eighteen, that's a harassment for fifty thousand nine hundred dollars.
Fifty, not fifty one, yeah, you said fifty.
All right, I'm sorry, fifty-one nine eighty.
That number's changed.
Listen.
Reminds us.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, fifty thousand nine ten for the match, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. That's consistent with the paperwork we have.
Yep.
And then twenty grand for your.
Shop. For the shop, snow cap, snowmobiles.
Seventy thousand nine ten total.
Right.
That's good.
So, I, I, you may call me partial, but a ski area is our, is one of Lake County's gems as far as. Providing an opportunity for youth and family experiences and something like that, we're, we're seeing this like none other. And, um, I invite any of you or all of you guys to come up sometime and, and to see what that's doing and. We have a ski rail shop in town that has completely ridged a hundred percent of their equipment on many weekends, they had everything they owned on the hill. And that's also helping us small business. We've had a strong following from a group of people in Bend that can come down and they're saying that they can. Turn to Lakeview, stay in a motel, eat at a restaurant, cheaper they can live in Bend to drive to Bachelor by lift tickets straight up. And they love our vibe, they, they love the terrain that we have as far as for kids and so on.
And speaking of kids, uh, sixty kids in ski school this year, eighty kids last year. Um, at Ropeto, I think you'd even maybe see numbers increase and more kids learn and then just ski out there in general, so.
It's, it's, it's a good deal.
So this is a, commissioners, this is something that we were, I was thinking that could come out of direct. Uh, funding that we got from Wyden, uh, last year, okay.
Have we received that yet?
I think we're anticipating receiving it in the next month or two, but I would like to build it in as a line item and to fund two fifteen. And earmark it specifically by this, if you guys agree with it.
I'm sure Jerry's still on. No, I, I'm very good with that. Can we use our money for that?
I'm not quite sure if it's eligible, um, we'd have to see if we have to. We can use that, we can use this flight money, um.
So Eric, we just brought up an idea, this subject, so this twenty percent grant match that we're talking about. The grant is a pay performance grant, in other words, we get no funding from them upfront, we have to fund the start of the process. So those funds we get from the county will be our tipping point, so when we start hiring our contractors and doing our work, that's what we use to pay. Then we submit the, the.
Invoices to.
To them and then we get our money in kind and we get it back and it starts rolling over like that and that's what happened when we built a chairlift in the beginning. And I'll be overseeing that part of the process with the state. Um, once, if we're successful with the grant, we'll be assigned a person to work with up there. And I will work with them, they try to, to create as a few pay points as they can, so it's not a dribbling effect, you know. I'm not calling them every week for another check. Uh, and we try to, try to land everything out of the van in a time, in a timely fashion. You can't always hit it perfect, but you can try to get it close to it. And so that's, your money becomes a domino, it, it'll fall first and then it'll get replenished and then that'll fall and then it'll get replenished, that's how, that's how we fund the project going through. We don't get a big check at one time and our checking account will just go nuts.
What's your project timeline, Dave? When do you plan on starting this?
So, that is a good question, so our need for the safety system is, is great like none other. And it, the contractor who is building the safety system is the same person who put, who helped with the installation of it. Who never got paid from our Craig Loop in the beginning, so we're grateful, he's still talking to us and working with us. He has already built the safety system, has it there, it has it in place. This is gonna, this grant award is gonna come later in the season and we won't know until late August what, what that's gonna look like. He's prepared to install it in September and so we'll be operating with that safety system for the twenty-two, twenty-three winter, which is a really cool thing. The rest of this stuff will fall into the following summer, we can't get the, we can't get the bowl wheel done and that kind of stuff in that kind of timeframe. Also, we'll get weathered out and getting a crane to the top of the hill and talking about doing that in September and October would be nuts, uh, would be beneficial to us, so.
It's still fire season.
Yeah, well, yeah, you predict the weather and, but anyway, uh, so our goal, we would love to see the shop expanded. And the tap scenario squared away, so we came to secure our shop right now, if we do, we have to, I end up to take an implement off the tap. Or take the tap out of the shop to get the shop going down. And also, right now, our snowmobiles are sitting on the deck of a, of a lodge and we got a crew that's working around and getting themselves in and out. And I'd like to have a place for them to sit and so. And also, the ski club did purchase another snowmobile, so we have two and we have two nice snowmobiles. And so if one of us to fail, we stay out when it's operating. But basically, one's assigned to the ski patrol, one's assigned to the hill manager to, because when we do have a problem, let's say we get an air cone. Somebody have to put boots on the ground and visually, would climb that tower, look at that tower to see what the problem is. Also, those, those brittle bars I discussed, that is a, a, a point where this is an actual mechanical connection, lots of times between the weather and vibration. They just get bad and throw faults there, you have to go up, take it out, loosen it up, re, put it back in, re-seat, re-tighten it up and it makes a good connection and you can continue operating. And so when the chairlift quits spinning, nobody can get up and down the hill, either in a snow cap or a snowmobile, so that's why these snowmobiles are critical to our operation.
So I know the grant, so the grant committee will, will hear the grants, all the grants in August. The money will be awarded approximately a month later, so sometimes in September, um. Just to throw that out there.
Right.
The research grant though is sooner, right, Dave?
The research grant, we're, we're gonna make a choice on that in June. And we applied for that and we've been talking with the family in that process and I've, I've, well, I can't, we can't count our eggs until they hatch. But that's, seems like a pretty favorable grant for us also. And what I didn't mention was a hundred and two, a hundred thousand dollars for expansion for screen of visit numbers and. That was fifty thousand dollars for vaulted toilets, expanding our RV parking and bringing power to those parking areas. And making out a fee for using power in the wintertime, I've been working with Dave Berman on that. Because I'm, I'm first up at the hill in the morning and this year in the spring when we were having fresh snow, we were having four to six RVers spinning the nights up there. And we've got to work, do a better job working with the state on their snow removal, because they've been plowing it straight down and putting where the RV park is now and they. They need to arc it and take it on more to the west and we, with Berman and I, we're going, they put the first RV sites too close. And I can't get my cat in between them to clean them out, so we're gonna make them over eighteen feet apart so I can swipe those out. It's my responsibility to take care of the parking lot between the parking lot and the lodge. And also with this new RV scenario, that'd be my responsibility to take care of the RV spots and make sure that they're open so we can get parking in there. And that will actually increase our parking because of, of having those spaces open, because right now they've been plugged with snow. And then the other part is the expansion to the east and, and that's, we're going to square up the parking lot.
Not with this money, not with this money, not with this money?
Mm-hmm.
With the grant.
Yeah, this is in the grant, okay. A hundred, so it's a fifty, it's, uh, fifty thousand, two fifty is for the parking lot expansion, it's also inclusive in that. So there's a lot of bang for the buck in this and again, it's all county ownership and the highlighters are the stewards of your property up there. One of the things we've got to do is we, our lease agreement that we have, the state would like us to have more of a maintenance. Uh, issues addressed, who's responsible for what, take care of what kind of things like that, it's pretty vague in the, in the lease agreement we have right now. And we're working with Dave Berman and Sharon and the state on what that needs to look like and that's gonna be coming back for you to modify that lease agreement. To properly address some of these new areas. And the, the club is starting to use the hill more and more off-season, I mean, shoot, this fall, we had a hard time doing maintenance of the hill because our lodge is red every weekend. In October, we had every weekend red, I think.
Yeah, it's already people up there for this.
We've got summer fests coming, you know, and that, and that's a great thing as far as. Using that hill all year round, it's such a benefit for our whole community, so.
So for summer fest and stuff, we open up our bathrooms in lodge and so on, yeah, but there's a lot of activity up there and having those vaulted toilets in there will be a great thing. Uh, for your red activity, they will not be locked and they'll be available.
Um, so we can get rolling with this thing. I think we should make the decision today instead of waiting for regular session. Um, tomorrow, so, one of you guys wanna make a motion?
Well, I think we just need to confirm where the mic's coming from.
Yeah, I got your motion. Are we good?
I didn't understand what Melanie was talking about, two fifteen is what are you thinking about building it?
I'd like to put it in fund two fifteen, our economic development fund. And just earmark it out of Wyden money, I think that'd be the easiest thing. And then we don't have to go back and whittle down ARPA funding for economic development, it, it would be eligible. Um, I don't know if it's eligible for their match, so I think it'd just be clean, we're gonna use Wyden money.
Yes.
That we don't have earmarked yet, but.
Okay. Okay.
So that's up to you guys.
It's a good way. Maybe, go ahead, go ahead. Um. So are you asking for a motion on the resolution? Um, or the letter of support, um, or the match?
Um, I guess the match mainly.
Okay, I, I, just to be clear, um, we're gonna earmark Wyden money for this then, just so I have a consensus from you guys.
Out of two fifteen.
Out of two fifteen, okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, utilize, um, for both, for both, uh, for both portions of this request. A full amount of seventy thousand nine hundred and ten dollars out of.
Be seventy.
Seventy thousand nine hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, yeah.
Out of, um, two fifteen.
I'm on the ski board.
I'll second, so I'm gonna stay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it. So motion's been made and seconded, any other further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you gonna sing for that too, or?
Yeah, I should.
Yeah. Okay, motion carried.
Aye.
Well, hi weatherers, thank you guys very much for your continued support, and it does take a village to make that move. And yes, I spent a lot of time up there, but there are so many other people that are doing their part portion. It's just amazing, our ski patrol and our, our board and the behind the scenes things. Um, our social networking now that we're on Facebook and Instagram is a huge thing for us. They pick something out and you can get immediately a response, and you get to turn out like you've never seen. So it's just kinda cool to see everything all kinda falling together. Barry's been involved with the ski school program, bringing his kids online, and we're starting to see the fruits of that. It's just, it's been a good deal.
Thank you all for your volunteers and making this a great place, so. Thank you guys.
It's pretty easy sell, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Barry.
Go bathroom chair.
Yeah.
Or Dave.
There, so do we want to drink? First beer, guys.
I think it's more just us talking about our thoughts.
Okay.
Greg's here to listen, you wanna take a few minute break?
I wonder if it's, it's on. Let's do this. How you doing, buddy?
Warm up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, doing good.
Alright, so, uh, let's all kick it off. We've had, we have a total of, uh, two point seven million dollars. That, uh, is a combination of white money plus, uh, ARPA funding. Uh, Reske's, you know, had five hundred thousand, we, we talked about, uh, utilizing that with the fairgrounds. We also have Lethicum money, uh, seven hundred thousand, uh, direct, which we'll call in Wyden money. Which is one and a half million, uh, I believe we have seven hundred and fifty thousand now, we'll soon be getting another seven hundred and fifty thousand soon. You guys agree with that, is that?
Yep.
That's what we know. Uh, we also know that we're gonna get more money, uh, this, this coming summer, right? Uh, with SRS. And whatnot, and it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna revert back to some old, uh, years and whatnot. But it's gonna be to the tune of about, I think it's gonna be over three million dollars. From talking with Treasury Comrade and whatnot, so we, not only do we have this two point seven, but we also have. Um, more money coming online here in the future. Um, I did some more research and talking last week with Representative Owens in the short session. Uh, I think we heard about the olive branch that, uh, was talked about, uh, with, uh, some money and whatnot. We're understanding that money is gonna go, there is gonna be some money going to fairgrounds, but there's also gonna be some money that's, uh. Gonna become available to our county for other things. One thing that they are not going to tackle right now in this short, short session is water. And, uh, they are gonna save that for the federal money through the infrastructure bill that's supposed to come out later this summer. And that's a hundred billion, correct? Yeah, it's a re- ridiculous, uh, high number, but, uh, it's a big, big number. What are you thinking?
Well, I'm thinking inflation. And I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm actually hearing the, the, the printers running in the bottom Federal Reserve printing money out of there. Anyway, go ahead.
So Rep Owens, uh, recommended that we get an application that we've done in the past, uh, for Christmas Valley. And for Paisley. Uh, to get their, uh, you know, to put the, that earmark in for both of their water systems so we can help support them. Because their projects are so large. We think Paisley's is three point three million, and we know that Christmas Valley's is north of fourteen million. So, uh, our two point seven that we currently have on board right now can help them, but it doesn't, uh, get them to the finish line. What I would like to propose today is that, um, we heard, uh, the town of Lakeview is working on, you know. Came in their last meeting that they're working on an MOU. Uh, that if the county helps support, build the north end of Lakeview Water Project. They would have the MOU in place, if we help, uh, pay for it and, and build it. Uh, they would accept it and, and take it on. Cause they don't have the capacity to take it on right now. And build. And build, yeah. Because they got their other water projects going on. What I propose is that we use one million of the two point seven million to go towards the North End Water Project. And this would be white and direct money. I can, I have assurances, or I have not necessarily assurances, but I have a good connection that, uh. We can also get some money through business organ. That is. A grant that could also secure us additional funding that potentially could help fund this North End Water Project.
And would that reduce our allocation of the one million?
No, it would probably be, need to be either on one million plus.
Whatever we're looking at, that's sort of two.
Yes.
For total cost.
Right.
Right.
So. Some of the other things I found out from, uh, Representative Owens, ARPA money cannot be used to reduce debt. I know we talked in previous commissioner meetings about reducing Christmas Valley's debt on their loan for water. So that kinda rules that out. And the fact that, um. We've got all this federal money that's, uh, we, we will be eligible for, uh, coming on later this summer. Where we think we can at least get a pre, a, a chunk. Or if not, try to get all from Christmas Valley and for Paisley. So this document here of red and green, uh, the green is what I'm looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And proposing for the group today.
So originally, we were looking at the two hundred and fifty thousand out of Lethicum's money for the North Lakeview Water Project. What was the decision to bump it to the one that through the fourth one? Out of that?
The, that they were no longer pursuing water money in the short session.
Okay, that was the, that was Owens's, yeah, that, they made that through. Okay, gotcha.
Apparently that decision got made. If, if they were pursuing water money, uh, in short session, then we were looking for a lot smaller number.
Okay. And was there, now I know Greg's in the room, so were some of the businesses, and were you guys looking to make a contribution to the building of the project as well?
Um, well Rick, now we're in it for eight hundred thousand dollars. So we've got a fair amount of skin in the game on, on the, on our total project at this point, so. Um, sitting here on short notice, I would be unwilling to commit additional dollars at this point without some more information. Without getting a little further down the road on something, um.
I've, I've been, I'm, I'm asking largely for the public information as well. You know, I'm not, I'm not playing stupid, I just want to afford you the opportunity of stating exactly what we just did. That you have already contributed almost a million dollars to this.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
On your side of things. Um, and I don't wanna put you on the spot as far as speaking for the other businesses, Parvus and others, or anything that they talked about. And their contribution to the project as well. And stops.
So our news aren't interested.
Okay.
Uh, at this time, uh, through my talking, but they are leaving that door open.
Okay.
So I don't wanna speak for them.
Correct.
Emery's haven't shown interest, uh, cause of their, well, they have very goodwill. Whatnot, but, uh, you know, we've got local residences, uh, the North End Project, uh, would connect, uh, the Lakeview Water System. At the junction of Cemetery and Missouri Avenue, uh, to the junction, the end of the, uh, Goldmore. Lakeview Water Line, which is near the Latter Day Saint Church. So it's not a really very long, uh, deal, but they would be watering sewer. Would connect their two water systems together, make it more efficient. Potentially provide water and sewer for every, all the residences on that line. As well as, uh, help the businesses, uh, such as specific line, Anderson Engineering. And, uh, uh, it's talking, so they're at Shell Station, or those three are very interested.
So, I have a couple concerns. I, I, I believe we can get water money in the long session or later on, I believe that. I also believe that Owens, Purpose Native Owens scored us some money on our fairgrounds. Now we've got, because the exact amount. Yet, it's been talked about, we're gonna get two million bucks. Don't know that for a fact. So, what I would propose is. The five hundred thousand that we have for the fairgrounds. Be brought from Reske. Would be moved to the North Lake Water Project. North Lakeview, North Lakeview Water Project. And then that money that we were going to spend on Christmas Valley and, um. North Lake will be put back in there to the original amount of.
You mean?
Five hundred thousand.
Add five hundred thousand to.
And seven hundred and fifty thousand. You see what I'm saying?
Not quite.
So like, we can't spend the Reske money at North, but we could sell it.
Right.
We could spend it in Lakeview. So if we move that money to the North Lake, Lakeview Water Project.
And produce five hundred thousand direct.
We reduce five hundred direct into the project, so we're still, we're still.
So we hold on to that five hundred thousand for other allocations potentially?
Well, I'd like to put it back into Christmas Valley and.
Okay.
And, and Paisley.
Christmas Valley and Paisley.
And then that way, they're at least getting what we're allocated, we'll continue to work on. Getting the full funding for both of those projects. Paisley and Christmas Valley later on, but they're not losing anything now, do you see what I'm saying?
Gotcha.
And so the fairgrounds is actually the one. We're kinda walking in the gray area of getting that money or not.
Right, because we, and we were hearing on the phone this morning, there was, there was a lot of fair money that went to Grant County and others and so forth, and so. There's some, is that what you're kind of leaning towards?
Well, I have information that's saying that we're gonna get two million bucks. It's not in stone yet, but what I'm.
For fair.
For the fair, for our fair.
Okay, okay.
So I'm betting on the come here, and.
Cause it's also, we've also heard one point five.
Right. E- either way, I mean, I'm gonna be more than happy. But the thing is, is that that way.
The Reske money's being used.
The Reske money's being used where he wanted it used.
In Lakeview.
And then we just do the direct allocation to keep, um, Paisley and Christmas Valley flush with what we're gonna give them. See what I'm saying? And so.
And we keep our, our allocation to the North Lakeview Water Project, about a million bucks?
Yeah, it, it doesn't change, it's all colors.
Yeah, we'll just change colors and money and keeping things where Reske really wanted his dollars spent. And I gotta, I gotta hats off to Reske as far as, you know, I've been working with him on several bills over this last week. And every time I call him, if he's on the floor taking, making, voting and reading bills, he, he can't call, but he always texts me and said, I'll call you in five minutes. And he does. You know, I mean, he is very available and very readily able to help Lake County. So, I mean, I, I do wanna help, I, I wanna see to his wishes as far as that money being spent in Lakeview, so I think that's a good suggestion.
And then that way, we're keeping North Lake County in, in the funds. And I'm betting on the come on the fairgrounds, and so.
One thing that you gotta keep.
Fire and slap me on the head, but.
Uh, that's a good plan, and you know, this was, it's all, uh, just kinda all come to fruition here. Uh, one thing, you don't know when Owens' money is going to be available. And it could be a while from now. But I like the idea of reducing the direct money by five hundred thousand and adding Reske's money to the water project.
Yeah, and then we move that money north, and so. That way, all of our constituents can have a piece of the pot.
So what are we looking to allocate to Paisley? Do we wanna split that, that five hundred right down the middle?
We'll, we'll see, you know.
Or do you wanna get that Paisley up to that five hundred thousand that they already listed?
So Paisley would be under fifty thousand of it, and then.
Yeah, so that would, and you wanna do the rest to Christmas Valley, so that would be about nine hundred and twenty-one thousand to see the water.
Well, no, because, well, yeah, it'll be, and that, that'll actually be doing one better, uh.
You're talking about a three fifty, one fifty split?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And so.
Close to a million bucks for Christmas Valley, right?
Yeah.
Close to, well, five hundred thousand for Paisley, that's a bit of money.
That, yeah. Okay, and that's kinda what their request was and what they were asking for and what they were slated for on the previous, um, chart as well. So it gets sent back to that five hundred thousand.
So the fairgrounds will just have to, we'll just have to continue to work and hopefully get that money pretty soon. I thi- I think that's more than fair, and then it keeps our Lakeview Water Project in the flush. So we can pull that off and it doesn't affect our constituents negatively.
Right. And, you know, it also allows Reske to pay for half of the Lakeview Water Project, you know, and, and make, that's a big. It's a big deal for us and the businesses.
And I, I can't say enough for our representatives and our senators.
Okay, yeah. Um, just real quick, Commissioner Schulenberger, just going back, because I know that this project is going to cost over one million dollars. Where's the rest of those dollars coming from again, just as a refresher? And what are we looking at potential through business organ?
I'm not gonna say the amount.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Just because it's gonna be bid on.
That's fine. Right, right, but, uh.
We're located in the neighborhood of the one point two, one point three.
It's called the, through business organ, it's called the Emerging Opportunity Fund through Hospital five thousand six.
Okay, five thou- five thousand six.
Five thousand six, yeah. It has to be spent the next eighteen months and, uh, working with, uh, Larry Polescany, he feels that. We'd have an opportunity here because of the amount of business that's involved in the North End Water Project. That, uh, we would be a good candidate for this.
Okay. Yeah.
Alright.
That helps.
So that's ungood, you agree?
So that's how I'm gonna do you agree? Well, I just appreciate the support, I really do, it's been a journey, and. I'm encouraged, uh, by the support here, the commissioner level, thank you guys for that very much, and, um. Yeah, have some, some hope and vision that this thing could be completed before the snow flies next fall is pretty encouraging. And, and I don't, I don't know if that's the case, I certainly hope for that. Um.
I think that's feasible.
So. Yeah. No, it's. Very much appreciated and encouraged by it, um. We continue to, um. Be running at strength and have a lot of demand, um. You know, four, five people walked through our door today at Hiram. And we're continually on that search, uh, for, for adding people and, um, just continue to have a lot of opportunity, so. Yeah, this, this would be hugely beneficial to have some good water and sewer out there, as already stated multiple times, you guys know that.
Well, we do, but you know, this is a great opportunity for the public to understand how important this is, you know, and how many people do you employ currently?
We're pushing that hundred threshold, um.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so it's, you know, we're pushing three hundred fifty thousand dollars a month in payroll into the community here. And, um. Have put several million dollars in expansion outside of this conversation in the last.
Correct.
Twenty-four to thirty-six months, looking backward, um, and just continue to, one of our facilities, um. You don't have to drive by our place too many times and see that we have some housekeeping we can do, and we're working on that, we're. Committed to a six hundred thousand dollar. Baghouse project that will be installed in August, September of this year. Um, that is going to replace. Six blowers on that north end of our plant that are outdated, antiquated, not up to spec, and making a mess, quite frankly. We wanna clean that up.
Right.
Those are going away, we're putting in a six hundred, two, six hundred, two baghouses, six hundred thousand dollar project. And they'll, they'll be brand new, state of the art, um, they'll be a duplicate of what we put out on our south expansion last year, if you wanna see what they are. It's the same company, same baghouse, that'll go on the north end. You know what's the payback on that? Really hard to pencil that. But it's just part of our vision, we wanna have a first-class facility, we wanna provide jobs, we wanna be proud of where we're working at, and, um. We are right there, front center on the highway, and you know, it matters.
Yeah.
So. This is part of that conversation, say we've got. Good sewer and water for a hundred employees, that matters, and so. Just really appreciate the support.
So Greg, on a totally different subject, um. If we can get natural gas to you, would you use it?
You know, um. I would not say no, um. Our, our forklifts, our heating, all of that infrastructure is propane-based right now. And Staub's has done an outstanding job of putting that infrastructure in place at our plant, they do an outstanding job of servicing us. And so I would have to have some substantial savings, um. To make a change on our system that's been pretty well thought out by the Staub's and, and really well supported by them. And so that would be a difficult decision. And, um, something, you know, we'd really have to look at, but, um, we're certainly not the volume user that our neighbors are there in Emery's, um. We're just not, I mean, we're talking forklifts and some heaters in the winter and that type of thing, and, um. So. Anyhow, I think we've, gosh, I don't know, we've got five or six propane tanks down there, if you wanna count them all up here and there.
Yeah, you know, I don't wanna. I don't wanna destroy another company that's been good to Lake County by putting something else in. But if it'll benefit other companies that don't use their products, I'm totally good with.
Sure.
And so I just didn't know if you had any other kind of uses, but.
No, not really, um, you know, we're just. We're not running those big burners or anything like that, um, probably a fairly small user.
Okay.
At, at the end of the day, and, um, it, it would really have to pencil, it, it, it would, you know, it could be close.
So.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, copy that. I think we can, uh. I don't know that we have to make a decision today, we can take it tomorrow. Let's just wanna make a decision today.
Let's, 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 uh, do it tomorrow, and then that way we can, if something else comes up. You know, we could add that to our. Tank, it gives us a day to think about it.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda for tomorrow, so, um.
You can add it.
Yeah, let's just have it as an addition on tomorrow's agenda.
With approval.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to bring that on to you guys, you know, and that, that way we can. We have so many balls in the air that we have to try to be fair and juggle.
Yeah.
This kinda streamlines it a little bit, and.
Well, and we are changing things as we go, so I'll just, just, just curiosity, um, no decisions, obviously, but. Would it be appropriate to have a motion on one of these funding projects at a time and not just the, and not the whole thing as a slate? And maybe we just commit Reski's money and that other five hundred thousand, say, hey, because, because Reski's really the only one who says he really wants his money committed.
Well, the North End, uh, Water Project is ready to move forward, uh, start spending money and whatnot. Uh, I'm ready, I would take on a, each one of those as they are ready.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking, maybe we just, as, as we kinda get our ducks in a row with each one of those projects, then we act on those. But not necessarily this whole slate, and keep this a work document.
So if I remember correctly, we have to allocate the money by twenty twenty-four, and it's gotta be spent by twenty twenty-six.
Correct, correct.
Or.
But Reski wanted his.
And this is all our money, right?
Well, I. Is the white, the white money, the direct? Yeah, that's probably the same rule too.
Yeah, it's all the same rule.
Yeah, it's just federal versus state.
So, but Reski wanted his spent because he had some concerns that, you know, maybe his.
Well, he go, he's, he's not our rep anymore after this year.
Right, because his district is changing, correct.
And so.
He just wanted to make sure that that money was taken care of, and I think Linton Gibson's probably in the same boat, so we might consider, sure that gets spent in here.
Let's do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Um. What else do we need to do?
You have resolution authorizing application for grant, letter of support for Fremont Highlander Ski Club.
Yes.
Step out on you guys, that's a good trick.
Alright, everybody, thank you.
Okay, see you.
Great.
Thank you guys.
Yep.
Like.
We didn't talk about any of that?
Uh, well.
I think you've kinda talked about it, but you guys didn't really specifically. You mostly talked about the match, not this specific stuff.
Right, yeah, the, the letter of support for the Fremont Highlander Ski Club and the resolution itself on the application for the grant, we didn't kinda talk about those. But, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with them, um.
Do we just need a consensus on that, or?
Oh, the resolution, I'll need a motion, sorry, go ahead.
Well, those are for action tomorrow, you guys just haven't specifically talked about them today in the last session.
So did you guys wanna talk about any of that?
I've been more depth. Have we gone over the resolution, a letter I'm comfortable with, um, a letter with well-written, um. You may.
What is the resolution?
Yeah, the only kind of country was demonstrating support for the submittal of the grant application to the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for. Infrastructure and Safety Improvements at Warren Canyon Ski Area, um.
So, I guess I'm a little confused, so.
Well, we may.
We've voted in support.
Of where we were gonna take the money and that, and we were all obviously supportive of the project, but we did not pass, we, we didn't pass a resolution or take a vote on the actual resolution, which we would sometime, we would need to do. We just approved where we were gonna take the money from, which is two fifteen.
But I guess what I'm asking is, why do we need a resolution?
The way that we're applying for it, it's our land, but they're, the Fremont Highlanders are gonna use.
Copy, copy, okay.
The funding, so we just have a resolution, we've done this historically with another grant opportunity.
Correct, I, I just wasn't tracking why we had to have a resolution, okay, I get it now.
Um, it is on the agenda for tomorrow.
Yep.
Do we wanna just wait?
Yeah, well, wait for tomorrow.
Okay.
And then. I just, I just wasn't clear why we're needing a resolution, so now I got that figured out in my head.
That's good.
And then we wanna talk about the. Letters for, we're good with.
You good with the letter?
With the, for the scale?
Yeah. I asked Barry if he had written it, and he said he thought maybe Sharon Lighty had written it, but it was a good letter, so.
It's either Sharon or Dave.
Dave, yeah. If it was Dave, I feel like it would be three pages.
Wasn't it?
Sharon.
Sharon.
Yeah.
So Sharon wrote, it looked like Sharon's work.
Yeah, she, she knows the key words.
Yeah.
Alright, so is there anything else, so we'll act on the rest of that tomorrow.
Um, if I could give you guys a liaison update real quick.
Okay.
Um, just legislatively, I kinda briefed you a little bit on this morning and Barry, but just for the public's knowledge, uh, this bill, uh. Uh, fifty-two eighteen, oh, I'm gonna get it, fifteen eighty-two, um, fire district annexation bill. Uh, we, we hassled with this a year ago, uh, it came out of Senator Frederick's office, it's back. Um, and it's worse than it was before, I kinda gave you guys an update on, on already, on some previous meetings, however. On Thursday or Friday, I think it was Friday actually, um, and I heard about it on Saturday. Representative Pam Marsh submitted, um, changes or, uh, amendments to the bill to try and make it better. Because she was, she was listening, she was listening to our concerns and the fact that we thought it was, was giving way too much discretionary authority to local fire districts to simply annex land in. To their district and increase people's taxes with no promises of additional services and, uh, no vote on part of the taxpayer. Um, it's never been made clear to us exactly what we're fixing, that we already have a process in place. Her fix basically made it so that, um. It wouldn't take immediate effect until the property had a major reassessment in terms of there was a property improvement. Or it's a property sold and changed hands, and then it would fall, it, it would fall under this, it, you. It would be basically annexed in, but they would submit the map, the district still has the power to submit these maps and extend their districts up to seven miles. Um, from any fire station. There's a lot of concern about the fact that it creates this door where fire districts will be building fire stations on the edges of their districts. Uh, in a lot of these places, you know, and extended and extend, um. I, I said it was still a very bad bill, all the representatives and senators that were supporting it were all from the urban and area and metro area. Um, it's basically a tax on rural communities from the urban areas, and they, they think they're doing us a favor. Um, and that they know what's best for us, and I have tried to explain to as many of them as I can that you're not helping us. This is not good, um. So. Where, where it sits right now, the bill is in Representative Reski's committee, actually, he's vice chair on, uh, of the House Revenue. It passed the Senate, moved to the House, uh, to, to a House Committee. It's being reviewed there, it will likely be making it out of committee today, they're not taking any additional public comment on it, it's in a work session later tonight around six. It's, uh, Reski will likely not be able to stop them from moving out of committee, the thing they're hoping for is that we'll hopefully just kind of. Die, because it's got a really high number, um, but. The. We, we talked about a lot of different strategies and everything and what we could do, but, um, Representative Iverson's also helping out with this bill, this is really the only thing that I have left on the Governance Committee. And Legislative Committee that we really wanted to have killed, uh, diesel bill's dead, a bunch of the other bills and stuff that we didn't like are dead, all the good bills, you know, for the most part that we liked. Um, are also pretty much dead, um, so this is one of the last ones, um, aside from the ag overtime bill, but that, you guys got an update on that this morning, I'm not convinced that that can be stopped. This, this bill. Is getting support because they think somehow it's better, my position is that it's still bad. If they would take it and consider at least just fixing, limited to just fixing the donut holes. Within districts where you have a whole area that's got a district, but there's like one or two properties in between in this small area that aren't in the district. If you wanted to fix those donut holes, you know, whatever, if you want to limit it to it, fine, but I still think it's bad. Um, that's where it's at right now. All the representatives, all the, the Republicans at least have taken the position on their caucus that it's a bad bill. So, um, they're hoping to kill it, but I just don't know if they'll be successful, the, what, what. Senator Frederick did say, however. If his, if we kill his bill again, because he's very upset with us and AOC for killing his bill last time, he says, if we kill his bill again. The amendments are off the table, he's coming back in a long session and he's going to push it through. He won't even ask, and he might be able to do it too, so he's, he's playing some dirty politics in my opinion. But anyway, I just wanted to give you guys an update on that because that's been developing every other day, I really appreciate the work that Representative Pam Marsh did. In terms of just trying to get, find a way to get to yes, she said she was agreeable to a lot of the changes that we suggested, um. And she's tried to work with us, but again, it's not her bill. And, uh, Senator Frederick is. Not waiting. So anyway, that's all I had on that, legislatively, a lot of these bills are kind of coming to an end, um, they're dying in committee, um, so. Hopefully get this done and over with. Ag overtime is likely going to hurt. This community and every other rural community in Oregon, especially on the farmers and agricultural side and the ranchers.
Just like our office meeting this morning talked about. You know, fifty-two bills have passed so far, fifteen were Democrat bills.
Two were Republican. Yeah, no, I, I mean, the. I, I consider myself a nonpartisan person, I try very hard to be. But this is not a time of nonpartisan politics. So, it's hyper-political, hang on. Alright, anything else?
No, sir. Yeah, I got liaison updates, so I had, uh, put two letters of support, one to the Oregon Transportation Commission, uh. Emphasizing, uh, that, uh. Equitable distribution of funding across government partners and considered correct local government investments as you violence plans for one point two billion in new state formula program funds, so. We got our RSA in there, you know, ask them to have that, and I think that'll be. Good for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Uh, the next one, we'll see, I mean, you know, probably high population areas that have bridges and whatnot are gonna take priority, but. We'll see if anything trickles down to us, at least we, we made that request. The second one is, uh, Oregon State University had a forestry, uh, position for. For Clamathin Lake County, it's for South Central Oregon, uh, his name is Daniel Lovell, he since has moved on to another position with Oregon State. Bush U has chose not to fill that position, it's been vacant since, uh, what, twenty nineteen? And with all of the wildfire uh restoration work that needs to go on. And future fuel reduction work that needs to go on for South Central Oregon. This letter request going up to OSU, uh, will ask that we get that job filled again. So, appreciate that, um. Last Friday, went to Paisley, uh, and met with several landowners. With regards to the uh Lake Abert uh discussion. A couple of months ago, Oregon Live came out with an article. Uh, with uh groups uh concerned that uh water was being diverted and not going into Lake Abert. Therefore, Lake Abert is drying up and it affects shoreline birds and other things that would use Lake Abert. Well, I think, uh, well, talking with representative Owens, they had that discussion in the, on the uh representative side. They they got to where we don't need any further discussions in the short session on this. But uh, there is a collaborative set up now with uh local landowners and whatnot where they will work on future. Work here to work with. Uh, those involved so that we can have uh more open discussions so that you're hearing both sides of the story. For example, uh, now that the reservoir has been built at Rivers End Ranch. Um, Red Man Trout now run the corridor when, and in the past they were not. That's that's one benefit that has happened. Um, and, you know, just, Oregon Live continues to ignore the fact that we're in a serious drought. And we have been able to, uh, you know, the the water's not there to go into the reservoir, so. Or into Lake Abert, so anyway, those are just some of the factors, but I think the collaborative is very focused on uh being organized. So that they have good talking points. Uh, you know, and they're gonna continue to meet and do a good job there and work with the. Representatives and state senators to help them out and so that we can be represented in the future for other talking points of how the water is used. Nobody doesn't want water to go into Lake Abert, but when there's no water to go into Lake Abert. That's what happens.
That's why that collaborative is going to be very important and there's a meeting on the fifteenth or or so, and I think the commissioner.
Sixteenth, isn't it?
Sixteenth, okay.
Uh, yeah, it's Wednesday the sixteenth, uh, we're gonna have some people uh come down and uh maybe get some flights, look at the uh. Chihuahua Can Corridor, uh, just see all the, all that it does. See how it looks from the air and then also look at it on the ground and also have discussion points. Uh, potentially at Paisley Community Center, so, looking forward to that day.
Um, quick update on the water users meeting and your conversations with Kyle Borman, um, how is that coming along?
It's coming along good, I think we're gonna have a date where we can, uh, they're gonna come down and talk with us. For those that don't know, we now have a, we have two water masters for Lake County. Uh, one represents basically uh Picture Rock Pass North. And uh, that person uh works out of Bend. And then the new person that they just hired, uh, will take everything from Picture Rock Pass South. And uh, we wanna have a discussion with. Uh, those folks, you know, express some of the concerns. Not only here in Lakeview and in Crystal Valley, but uh we also have concerns in Silver Lake. Obviously, the Chihuahua Can, uh, their water system there and also the Warner Valley, so. All throughout Lake County, we've got water issues and we need to uh make sure that uh these folks are keen because they are new to the jobs, fairly new. And uh, the south end for sure is brand new and want them to be aware of all the issues that we have. One of the concerns is that uh none of them are currently residing in Lakeview or Lake County. And they plan to do the job remotely and so we need to have those discussions of how they can serve the people. Uh, while. Coming to Lake County as needed or when needed, so.
Right. About, or is your meeting at eleven forty? All of our meetings for the rest of March are going to be here in Lakeview, correct? All of, they're all gonna be here, sorry?
Yes.
April, first April, I think we.
So, Crystal Valley, what date it is, uh, I have an appointment. Six.
Yep.
Did Derek ever?
He confirmed, uh, due fully.